During executive session, medical personnel and potential litigation were discussed. We're now at the point on the agenda for financing facilities. We turn this over to Chair Caswell.
Yes, thank you. All right, so we had discussion on a lot of different items, some proposals and some RFPs were opened. First, Adam took us through a Presido phone proposal that would help meet the college's needs as well as federal needs in the new phone system for the college. So we're looking at that since the current system is end of life, basically. So I'll have a resolution for that, or sorry, so that'll come to the board in the near future for that. And then several other RFPs which will lead to resolutions, which I'll go into detail on each one when we get to the board session. We discussed the frequency sale. The college has a couple of frequencies which we've had an opportunity to sell, so we'll have a resolution at the board meeting to consider the sale of those frequencies. And then we just had informational updates on a number of things. Scott Schnackenberg gave us an update on the enrollment for the fall. Adam Rathbun gave us updates on the Graham Leach-Liley Act audit findings for the college, as well as we reviewed the management confidential salary increases for the upcoming year, as well as a short overview of the budget for the 23-24 year. So that basically covered the highlights of our meeting this month. Thank you.
Any questions for Stephen? Next item on the agenda is liaison reports. Oh, that's right, sorry. We had some changes to financing facilities.
So there were a couple of things that have been happening, well, not a couple, a lot of things, but two important things happening the past several weeks. One of them is in reference to the Graham-Leach-Liley Act. There is in, I'm assuming everybody got the memo, so self-explanatory, there was an audit done on our federal student aid enterprise cybersecurity group did an audit, and they ranked that against some of the GLBA requirements that are within the federal student aid guidelines. And there was a report that came back and several findings that we are working on a response by. We have to provide a response by the 30th, so on Friday. One of the main issues or concerns in that finding was a qualified individual being identified as your campus cybersecurity expert. We do not have that person at this time. If you recall, back in last September, the Board of Trustees approved a new position, Chief Information Security Officer, CISO. That is the position to satisfy that requirement. We are currently actively searching to fill that position. We have the search committee meeting next week to review the candidates that have applied for that position. It's been open for a couple of months. We do have several candidates in there. The other avenue we're taking right now to address that is we've received three proposals for virtual CISO expertise. This would provide us with kind of like an hourly, a monthly hourly allocation of services to get us in compliance with the GLBA requirements. As part of GLBA, it does state that you can hire a third-party consultant to satisfy that requirement, so that would be an immediate fix to address that, as well as get us up to compliance with those cybersecurity standards. There's a lot of other risk assessment finding in here, change management, user login. A lot of these, they had questions on, and our IT team has been working over the past couple of weeks to address those. I had the first draft of the response received today to address all those areas. All of them, except for the CISO one, really has a solid answer at this point, and we are looking to finalize that report, submit it by the 30th, which is our deadline, and then continue to work on addressing the GLBA requirements that are outlined in the audit findings. The good news is, and we'll introduce in a little bit, we have a new CIO on board who is going to help us streamline those processes and implement them as best we can. Any questions on that one?
Just to note that it's due Friday, this Friday, so.
Yeah, the follow-up, it's called a corrective action plan, CAP, and we have to submit that on Friday.
Thank you.
So the second item is our five-year capital plan. So on August 13th, Dr. Jordan, myself, and several members of my team met with the county's capital planning committee. It's an annual meeting they held to review open projects that are ongoing, as well as new projects in the five-year capital plan. The open projects are usually a, just a quick update where we stand with those, when we expect to close them out. New projects are usually just a kind of a run-through of what those projects entail. This year, there was a lot more discussion around our five-year plan because they do, we are asking for significant capital project requests in the out years. And so there was a lot of discussion on, you know, what the value is that the county and the state would be getting in return for the investment into campus. And so the allocated portion of the system that we submit these capital projects into the county is a 250-character max, so it doesn't really allow us to expand on the justification and the requirements that we have for these projects. And so there isn't a whole lot of details there for them to kind of go off of. So considering the timing of everything and a lot of the discussions that went back and forth, the county and the college agreed that we would push back all of our capital projects one year to allow us more time to draft just a much better and clearer narrative for the requests, as well as to draft with an outside consultant, architectural firm, renderings, schematics, to show what these investments are going to be producing, so just kind of a visualization of what the project entails. So we need more time to do that, obviously, so pushing out the projects a year is going to allow us to do that. It doesn't change the overall, you know, 10-year master plan, it just pushes things out one year, which is a good thing, so that we ensure that we're in alignment with, you know, the strategic plan moving forward, as well as as we develop all the centers of excellence in that model, ensuring that we capture all those academic requirements into the capital projects would be key as well. So I think it's going to actually help us, you know, make sure that all those plans are aligned together. The other change that we did, Dr. Jordan and I talked about, and we decided to present and switch around, is we flipped the CBI in the Duchess Drummond renovation. It's going to allow us to do really better align the center of excellence model when we move forward, because that, we were going to focus, say, on the Center of Excellence for Nursing and Allied Health, which is, majority of those programs are currently in the CBI building. If we focus on that project first, which will help align other programs within Hudson Hall, it's a better timeline for how projects will fit together in the long run. It's also a lower-cost project, estimated at this point in time, so I think it's a little easier pill to swallow at first when you start talking about these larger-scale projects. And so we did make the recommendation, or I did make the recommendation, to switch those two projects. So now you see that CBI is the first major project, and then Duchess Drummond is the year after. So the way that the capital plan looks now for the total 2025 requests from the county, we're only asking for 1.9 million this year, and then next year would be just shy of $1 million before we get into the larger-scale projects, whereas the older plan, we were looking at, you know, $3 million this year, and then upwards of $30 million next year. So this really does push it out and allow us to justify our projects and have more in-depth conversations with the county about the reasons for the investment and how they're going to impact Duchess Community College as a whole moving forward. Any questions on that one?
Just to comment again, Adam, that the numbers don't really change, it's just the order of the numbers because of the pushing out of the years.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is liaison reports. I'm taking over the DCC Foundation report because trustee Castella couldn't make it tonight. So these are the dates for future events and meetings for the foundation. The Board of Directors will be meeting Thursdays at 4:00 PM, September 19th, 2024, in Bound 122, December 5th, 2024, March 6th, 2025, and May 29th, 2025. That will also be in Bound 122. The other locations have yet to be determined. Foundation events, looking ahead. David Conklin distinguished lecture, October 3rd, 2024, just around the corner. Richard Raytano endowed chair, October 24th, 2024, the Holiday Craft Fair, November 30th and December 1st of this year. Board Holiday Dinner, December 5th of this year, the Celebration of Giving, February 21st, 2025. Communities Bridge to the Future Gala, March 29th, 2025. Honors Convocation, May 14th, 2025, and the Golf Tournament in Memory of Jack Orca, May 19th, 2025. There'll also be some dates that have not been determined, but for these two events, the Handel Foundation Endowed Faculty Chair to Perpetuate the Legacy of Franklin Eleanor Roosevelt Lecture, as well as the Greenspan Trust Handel Foundation Endowed Chair in Holocaust and Genocide Studies Lecture. What do you have, any questions? There is no association meeting because we're setting up a meeting for our next term this in September, and that's all. Anybody have any questions otherwise? Okay, then let's move over to, hey, we.
Perfect timing.
I'm calling the order, call to order our regular board, our regular meeting at 6:30 it looks like, and let's see, Ms. Tripp, would you like to lead us with the Pledge of Legions tonight?
Sure. Pledge of Legions.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ponticillan, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Laugn, here.
Here.
Mr. Frank Castell.
Mr. Stephen Passer.
Present.
Ms. Darren Clatt.
Here.
Mr. Michael Dupree.
Here.
Ms. Angela Flesman.
Present.
Ms. Lisa Garding.
Mr. Yves Guzman.
Ms. Evelyn Niche.
Ms. Linga Pratt.
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. It's been revised, as I said recently, made a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Thank you. Joy, did anyone sign up for public comment tonight? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes, held on July 23rd, 2024. Everyone had a chance to review them?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? And a note, thank you Vice Chair Flesman for running a flawless meeting, I could see because it ended very quickly.
I am super passionate.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports. We'll start with trustee Cloud for Academic and Student Affairs tipping in for Lisa Garding.
Okay. We had a presentation on the Middle States Supplemental Report, which is due to Middle States on September 5th, 2024. The college is in the process of finalizing its report that addressed its questions on enrollment management, financial resources, and students, and the assessment of administrative units, and will be submitted on schedule. Then we just had a number of informational updates, the policy on racial and other forms of discrimination, new programs. Dr. Houston provided the committee with updates on new program development at the college, including HVAC, automotive, and Centers of Excellence programs. Scott Schnackenberg provided the committee with an update on the Mechatronics Enrollment Numbers. Dr. Jordan spoke to the committee on the Think Ahead Academy for Neurodiverse Learners and the desire to align it closely with the college's Behavioral Health Program. Through the Think Ahead Academy, the college hopes to see more students thriving in programs like the Direct Service Professional Program. We had an update on the 2024-2025 calendar of events, and the Fall Convocation was August 22nd, with Dr. Susan Rogers providing the committee with a quick rundown of what was going to take place. And the, and a reminder was provided to the committee on the date for the annual reorg meeting, September 24th, 2025.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody have any questions for trustee Cloud? That was easy. Next item on the agenda for committees is board policy, and trustee Pratt is subbing in tonight for trustee Guzman is on vacation. Linda?
We met on Wednesday, August 14th, and we discussed new policies and revised policies. Dr. Susan Rogers spoke on several proposed policies that are recommended by SUNY. DCC has some recommendations to these policies. Some of the policies the college already has in place, some policies will need revision in order to better suit us. Revisions to these policies will be made where appropriate, and those updates will be brought before the committee for approval following the required vetting process for new and revised policies. We had informational updates as well. We also had an update on the policy on racial and other forms of discrimination, as well as the update on the 2024-2025 calendar and the annual reorganization meeting. The things that we had that you didn't have were the professional handbook updates, the committee received information on updates being made to the professional staff handbook, specific updates to the Title IX policy were highlighted for the committee in order for the college to remain in compliance with the new laws that went into effect on August 1st. We also had an update on the exploration and integration of the AI Task Force. The board adopted a policy to explore AI at a board meeting held in May 2024. A team has been assembled to make up the task force. Appointment letters were said to, that they will be going out to those members, and a chair and co-chair assigned. I know that, that the letters have now gone out because we've been notified of that. So thank you for everybody that's serving on that committee, and that's the policy update.
Any questions for Linda? Next item in the big liruna tonight is financing facilities.
All right, thank you.
Chair Caswell?
All right, I'm ready. All right, so Adam Rutherford spoke to the committee about four bids and RFPs. The bids were for annual service contracts, and one bid was for a budget item for the next fiscal year, and I'll have resolutions for those in just a moment. The committee also reviewed the agreement and offer made by T-Mobile for two frequencies owned by the college, and I'll have a resolution for that item as well. And then I'll have two more resolutions, which Adam discussed in workshop. They're related to our capital plan and also the use of fund balance to address an audit finding. Okay? And then, of course, our committee also received several informational updates, as the other committees did. So with that, I will move into the resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2024-60, and I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that a three-year contract for pre-employment background screening services, in accordance with the specifications, be awarded to First Choice Background Screenings, Davie, Florida, and be it resolved, the contract will have the option of two one-year renewals.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, next resolution is 2024-61. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the proposal received from the testing and maintenance of electric fire alarm systems, in accordance with the specifications, be awarded to NorTech Protection Systems of Wapiners Falls, New York, for a multi, multiple-year contract in the amount of $47,850. This contract is for three years, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
Next resolution, 2024-62. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the bid received for elevator maintenance and service be awarded to Ferren's Electric Elevator Company, the vendor submitting the lowest aggregate price bid in accordance with the specifications for a multi-year contract in the amount specified on the attached summary sheet for labor and monthly maintenance. This contract is for three years, with a provision for two one-year extensions.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
Next, Resolution 2024-63. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the bid received for the water-based fire alarm testing services and maintenance contract, in accordance with the specifications, be awarded to Arco Protection Systems, Poughkeepsie, New York. This contract is for one year, with the option to extend two additional one-year terms.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, next, Resolution 2024-64. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves and authorizes the college to enter into a purchase agreement with T-Mobile for the sale of the college's call signs, WLX 207 and WHR 978, in the amount of $4 million.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
Two more to go. Resolution 2024-65. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the revised capital plan, as outlined in the attached document, which is to be made part of the minutes of this meeting, as Duchess Community College's five-year capital projects plan for the period of 2025 through 2029.
Second.
Thank you, Sestee Biersak. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, and the final resolution, number 2024-66. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the use of college fund balance to fund initiatives to address GBLA findings in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
Thank you, Angela. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. You hit there really fast and efficiently as well, Stephen. Next item on the agenda is Chair Flesman's Personnel and Community Relations.
Thank you very much. We have two resolutions that were discussed in committee, along with other matters related to personnel issues. So Resolution 2024-67, I offer the following and move its adoption. Resolve that for the 2024-25 fiscal year, the salaries listed in the attached are approved effective September 1st, 2024, and that the President is hereby authorized to prepare contracts up to the amount specified in the attached document, which will be made part of the official minutes of this meeting. Is there a second? Second.
Thank you.
Sorry?
No, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries.
Resolution 2024-68, I offer the following and move its adoption. Resolve that the Board of Trustees, Duchess Community College hereby approves to extend Dr. Peter Grant Jordan's employment contract for an additional four months through November 30th, 2024, with an increase in salary of 4%. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're splitting this.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, committee chairs and substitutes, for your excellent work tonight, getting us through things quickly. Next item on the agenda is reported to student trustee, trustee Biersak.
Thank you. So today at our meeting, the SGA officially nominated Maya Chenkhan as our coordinator of internal affairs.
Yay!
That's great.
We're still looking for people to fill the role of president, VP, and treasurer, but it's still ongoing. We have some people who have interest, but we're going to follow through with them, see if they're actually committed to doing it. Over the past month and a half, Matt Hamlin has hosted a new student orientation in Drummond Hall, about 500 students attending, and children and family members attending also. Our chief justice, Catherine Pena Gomez, is attending the SUNY SA Conference next weekend in Albany, from September 6th till September 8th. The SGA is hoping to work with the administration in hopes of creating a centralized area of information, look at calendar for all the events happening on campus, because right now, it's really helping out there. So hopefully that we can advertise what's happening, so sports games, club events, campus events in general, so people can know when they're happening and that they can attend these events in the future. Events are happening on campus in the future that I want to address. Next week, September 4th and 5th, activities will be hosting Falcon Fest on the campus walkway from 11:00 AM till 3:00 PM. So programs and clubs and such can recruit new members for the new school year. And then also, I want to highlight this, October 2nd, it's a Wednesday, at 5:30 PM, Title IX will be holding a solo performance by Karat and Kadwani called Intrusion. This event is open to the public, but is required for SGA athletes and RAs to attend.
Any questions for Bobby? That was pretty quick. Just so you know, it was at our board retreat that Linda said, why don't we have a calendar for us that tells us for all the events? Before we now have, so it makes sense to have one for the students as well, that's like a master calendar that shows.
I think not everyone checks emails, and also flyers only do so much to advertise events happening on campus, so having somewhere like on MyTCC or whatever to advertise all the events happening, it'll increase attendance for these events guaranteed, so.
I think that's a great idea. We like your initiative as well. Any questions for Bobby? There being none, the next item on the agenda is my report, and I'll, there's a lot to get through, but I'll try to be brief. The National Association of Direct Support Professionals has named one of our DSP students, Jody Beck, as the E-Badge Owner of the Month. Early August, DCC hosted 200 bike New York participants on the third day of their 200-mile ride from Albany to Nyax, when the riders camped out on the field in front of our residence hall, but truthfully, most stayed in the Thocan Hall gym because of storms, but we do hope to host them again next year. Convocation is the official part of the semesters, of the fall semesters, work for faculty returning to campus, and a celebration to those faculty and staff who've been working all summer long. Last Thursdays have been began with an inspirational welcome from Peter about where the college has been and where we were going. This was followed by a more conversational presentation by some members of the executive leadership team, and you're truly joining them for the first time instead of just attending. It was a lot of fun, although there were a lot of questions that stumped me, because we did take questions from the audience. Thank you again, Susan, Ray, Adam, Scott, et cetera, for all the participation. I can say that by the end of the half a day that I was there, at least, and I know from talking to others, by the end, a framework for the next year has now been set, focused on the wildly important goal of increasing credit bearing enrollment, while together strive to create a more positive campus culture. This summer, across-campus working group, working on early child education led by Dr. Susan Rogers, participated in Duchess County Summit on Early Childcare Challenges and Opportunities. President was included, DCC's Assistant Professor Jennifer Santos Woso, and Greenspan Director Sandra Kreitch, who's a tech. They also hosted campus tours of our childcare spaces, released an RFP for feasibility study to merge the Greenspan Daycare with the Pearson Lab Nursery School, and interviewed firms who responded to the RFP. Next month, we welcome two pre-K classrooms to the daycare center, as authorized by this board, for C in Poughkeepsie, and they're going to continue their work throughout the coming academic year. Grants. Applications for over 2.3 million have been submitted this summer that, if we are successful, bring support to our students in strategic initiatives, including 5.6, 5.8, excuse me, 518,000 support services for students with disabilities, student success in enrollment management activities, and academic support services. Trio student support services for 1.361 million over five years. Bard College with DCC applied to the National Science Foundation on July 19th, requesting $420,000 in stipend support for our faculty and students over three years to conduct research in partnership with Bard faculty in biological sciences. $10,000 in support of cannabis retail management and public safety credential programs, basic book certificate, and the EMT Basic and CASACT credit-free programs. $10,000 targeted enrollment of non-traditional adult students, the students who have stepped out, and $12,000 for FAFSA completion support services. In late June, 30 students graduated from our high school equivalency program. Dr. Jordan, Ray Houston, Tim Decker, and Judith Lopez, our HSE coordinators, spoke while keynote speaker Dennis Woodbine shared his personal journey from trashing to triumph, noting that it all began, we decided to get his HSE diploma. And finally, DCC and the Cornell Cooperative Extension, a Duchess County partner to implement the Green Team Program at Poughkeepsie, which offers Poughkeepsie youth the opportunity to get hands-on experience in gardening and agriculture. I've done this with another organization, trust me, it's really great to see some students who've never had their hands in dirt before, actually be able to get in and understand what gardening is. We did this at Mewstris Fran Garden in Hyde Park. This also gives them opportunities in entrepreneurial leadership. During spring 2024, the Green Team spent approximately eight weeks on DCC's Poughkeepsie campus, engaging in various activities and giving our gardens a great facelift. In addition, there was a day that they had other activities that were just academic oriented, trying to lure them over here for future students. That's my report. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda, reporter, the president.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three things to share with you. The first is staff introductions, and I'm going to ask for Vice President and Diana Pollard to do the initial introduction. We're going to start with Adam, who has two new staff members to introduce.
So I've prepared a really long speech for this. If you have not read the latest edition of DCC Connects, I encourage you to read that because it talks more to the two new hires in my division than I will say here. The first, Deepa Dubal. Stand up, please. Deepa is our new Chief Information Officer, CIO, three-plus years now making, maybe, since I've been here, so. So great addition to our campus here, already making a really good impact. This is week two for her. She comes from us from Transylvania University, where she was the Chief Information Officer there in Kentucky. But again, read this, read the rest of it at your leisure as well, but Deepa, welcome.
Let's hear it, Deepa. We do this to everybody, you're always proud.
Well, originally from India, Mumbai, and I have two kids. One is, one just started medicine this fall, and my daughter, she is doing biological engineering at University of Lurue, and as well as in IT too. And all my life, my career has been in IT, and you know, started as programmer, just worked my way up. I don't know what got into me that I came to US all by myself, and, but on my journey, I have met some really good people who have had a strong impact on my career. They have been so supportive that I reached where I am today, and I'm very grateful to everyone I've met, and I'm looking forward to make more connections here, and thank you for a great welcome.
Second staff member, Associate Vice President for Administration for Campus Facilities, Roberto Rob Sorillo. Rob comes from us, comes to us from Westchester Community College, where he was the director of physical plant for, I believe, 22 years. The interesting fact behind this is that Bridget Anderson hired him at Westchester. He's now coming here to fill her shoes at Dutchess. Really a great addition, fit right in, don't have to teach him anything about SUNY, facilities, anything, he's really making a good impact, and it'll be a seamless transition when Bridget officially retires this Friday. Welcome, Rob.
I'm excited to be here. A little bit about myself, I'm married with two kids. My daughter is also an educator. She just started her new job today at Winward, so she was excited for that today. I texted both of you. My son is a college student. He's following my footsteps as an architect, I have an architect background. I've been in facilities for over 27 years, and I'm excited to be here and join the team, so thank you for the welcome.
Ray, you have an introduction.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Fred Herbst. He is our new Associate Dean of Instruction and Learning Pre-Colegio Programs in Title III. He comes to us from SUNY Brocklin Community College, where he served as the Dean of School of Arts Education, Humanities, and Social Sciences. Prior to RCC, Fred was at SUNY Corning Community College, where he served in a number of roles, including full-time tenured faculty in arts, program director, chair of humanities, interim associate dean, and interim provost. He is a two-time SUNY Chancellors Award winner for Excellence in Teaching and Excellence in Scholarship and Creative Activities. He holds an MFA in Ceramics from the University of North Texas and a BFA in Art and a minor in Art History from the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, and he began, let's see, this is week number three?
Week number three.
Week number three for Fred, so please, join me, welcome Fred.
Thanks, everybody, for the welcome. I can tell you, this is my third SUNY institution, and I have never felt more welcome. It's really great to step into a great team that's already here, and doing this work is really what I've spent my life doing in community colleges. And as an example, this week, I've been able to meet with the Beacon High School principal yesterday, and this morning I was at MOSI's, working with them. So this is the work I love to do, and I'm so happy to be part of the team. Thank you.
Next, Susan.
As Chief of Staff and Vice President for Institutional Effectiveness, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our new Director of Marketing and Communications, Gina DeAngelo Mullin. She can stand up? Yeah, there you go. I'm sure it won't take long for you to see why we are so excited to welcome her to the team. To share a little bit about her, Gina has spent most of her career building and leading award-winning marketing and communications departments throughout the Hudson Valley and the tri-state region. She has, most recently, Gina has been the Senior Director for Oftm, formerly Caremount, and led a marketing team inclusive of digital creative, media planning, analytics, and communications divisions throughout New York and New Jersey. The East Region served over 2 million patients, nearly 10,000 employees, and more than 2,500 providers. She's also experienced working for a top Westchester agency, where she gained further insight working with the luxury, real estate, education, and nonprofit sectors, and that's quite a breadth of marketing experience. Prior to those experiences, Gina ran events and enrollment for Windows on the World Wine School in New York City for several years. She has been named a Hudson Valley Magazine Women in Business winner, top female in healthcare by PR News, a Cranes News Notable in Marketing and PR recipient, and has worked with her teams to garner several ad and content campaign awards through Bulldog PR, Reagan, and the Marcom Awards, among others. So I hope that you are ready to be impressed as we already are. We're so happy to have Gina on the team. Welcome.
Susan, good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to be here. Susan has gone over a lot of my career. As you can see, I've kind of worked in many different sectors and feel very comfortable flexing in and out of different industries. I love to learn, I love to kind of dive in and see where I can be effective and where I can help evolve teams. For myself personally, just a little bit about me, I'm a local resident, literally right down the street, I'm here in Hyde Park. I graduated from Marist many years ago, and I live, as I said, Hyde Park, Poughkeepsie, with my husband, Rob, who's a personal trainer, so wellness is one of my passions, and also my two daughters. Ava is a freshman in college, so I just went through the journey with her and really kind of gained a lot of insight there into both the parent and student experience, so it's very fresh, and we're going through a little bit of homesickness now, but we'll figure it out. And then my second daughter is a freshman in high school at FDR, so thank you.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Anna Paro, who's our new Director of Development in the foundation. Anna's been here a little bit longer than the others, she's been here since April 1st with us. She comes with 30 years of development experience. She previously worked at high schools, private high schools, doing development, and she was a president also. And prior to that, she worked at the Arch Diocese of New York doing development. She's very detail-oriented, mission-driven, dedicated, and jumped right in with both feet, and we're very proud to have her. She's helping with policy development, program development, and donor acquisition. She truly understands collaborative team environment and working closely with her new team to do what's best for our fundraising efforts. Additionally, she's helping our enrollment initiatives because her son just started attending here on Monday.
I've worked in fundraising for 30 years, but over 20 in education, which is a real passion of mine, be able to assist those who are not able to really have an education and provide resources. So that has been something I'm very proud of and happy to be a part of this bigger team. I'm warmly welcomed by everyone since my first day, so I just want to thank you for that. I don't think, I agree with some of the other newly newcomers, that the welcome that we received here has really been exceptional in comparison to some other organizations. As Diana mentioned, I have a son who just started on Monday, his name is Rukamulaw, so we'll see how that goes. And I have a daughter who is a sophomore, who attends the Catholic school in Westchester, so thank you so much, and I'm really looking forward to what I can bring to DCC and the DCC outpatient in the coming year.
I'm going to ask Scott to do an introduction and then shift into an enrollment update.
Good evening. I'm happy to introduce Diana Cruz. She is our new Director of Advising in the ACT Center. She's been with us for several months now, which means she's had a baptism by fire enrollment process. She comes to us from Manhattan College, where she's been, was 20-plus years, Diana? Yeah. She was a Senior Assistant Dean in the School of Liberal Arts in charge of managing and supervising the advising of students in the humanities and social sciences. Prior to that, she'd been an Assistant Dean and an academic advisor, and she has a wealth of experience developing action plans for at-risk students, assessing the effectiveness of advising, and training advising staff. She's hit the ground running at DCC, and I'm thrilled to have her in that spot. So welcome, Diane.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the deep part of that is community college community. I really enjoy working with students, I enjoy helping students, and as someone who moved to community college, probably would not have followed the career path I have if not for the wonderful people who help me along, like, I wouldn't be here today. So I look forward to working with students, helping achieve their goal, and to be successful, and to be, you know, do the things they want to do when they know it at the time, right? To follow up on me, I'm a Warner Falls resident, I have a husband, I have two children, my daughter is a DCC alum, and I enjoy living in Dutchess County. I'm originally from Westchester County, I enjoy the beauty that's here, I enjoy the nature, I enjoy the ruralness, yet the urbanness, I think that that's really something unique and special, and I'm just happy to be here and to help the community and to get to know all of you. You've all been really welcoming, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, shifting gears into enrollment. As of this morning, we had about nearly 4,300 students enroll for just under 48,000 credits for the fall. That's 173 more students and 950 more credits than at this point last year. That's about a 4% increase in headcount, 2% in credits. The first three weeks of August were really sluggish. We were maybe doing 60% each day, what we were doing last year. The FAFSA issues, we handled them and did a great job early, but then we got to the students who just weren't getting it done, and it really slowed things down. Last week, things picked up significantly and the numbers got better again. We were to the point where we were almost level, but we've gotten back to the point where we're above last year, and we're trending right about to be almost exactly on budget right now, which, given the problematic rollout of the FAFSA, is a huge win. I don't, I don't think many other places are going to be able to say that, because given that 12% fewer students have filled out the FAFSA in New York this year, there are far fewer students to go around. New students, we have 1,567, which is about 30 fewer than last year at this point, and returning students, we have over 200 more than we had last year. Applications were up 3.5%, so roughly the same percentage as enrollment is up. The resident hall has 290 students checked in right now. As of last week, it was a bit over 300, but some of those students had not filed their FAFSA, they did not get their financial situation in order, so we're probably going to end up around 295, which is still 55 more than last year, and we're going to have pretty much a full hall. We were asked last time about Mechatronics enrollment. Last year, the 23-24, the goal was to have 30 credit-free and 12 degree-seeking students. We passed both of those, we had 33 credit-free and added 25 new degree-seeking students. By the spring, the programs had moved, the programs we associated with it, which are air conditioning and electrical technology, enrollment from spring to spring had gone up 32 to 48. This fall, we're seeing an increase in those programs of 35 students. Air conditioning is at its maximum. We actually got a call from one of the companies today wanting to add a couple more students, so we're seeing what we can do to get those students in, but we also had five or six students on a waiting list for that first class, so we were a little more successful than we thought we were going to be, and we need to build some capacity to handle the student interest that there is now. In electrical technology, we have 26 new students as of this morning, and overall enrollment in that program is going to be up by 30 students this, this fall. So compared to last fall, we're up nearly 40 students and about 65% over where we were. So it's clearly working, and there's clearly a lot of interest. If we have an H, once we get an HVAC program going, enrollment's going to explode, because we have people asking about it all the time, and with increased interest in air conditioning, add that to the HVAC, we're going to be in a really good place. In speaking about that, I want to talk about where enrollment increases are coming. That's one part of it, but it's mostly coming in the technical programs. Aviation pilot and maintenance, lab tech, phlebotomy, paramedic, all grew significantly this year. Without those areas of enrollment, our enrollment would be decreasing. Some of the other areas growing include computer science, computer information systems, agriculture, architectural technology, and all the business degrees. They'd be administration, transfer, management, and accountant, all of those grew significantly this year. So we have some areas that are really hot right now, and we want to continue to take advantage of that moving forward. Any questions?
Scott, what's our paramedic enrollment?
Between the certificate and the degree, I think it was 45 as of this morning. Last year, it was only a little over 20.
So the certificate being the EMT Basic?
Yes.
And then the degree being the paramedic?
Yes, yeah.
Do you know the breakdown?
It's pretty much evenly split.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a huge increase to meet the need that we have in this county.
It's a huge need.
It's a massive need. I mean, we've talked about this before, so if we can continue to grow that, the impact that that'll have on the EMS community in Dutchess County, I think, can really be felt. So anything we can do to help, I know the county will love hearing this, the two of you here. You know, this is a critical need in Dutchess County right now.
Yeah, I happen to be one of the, at one of the legislature meetings where they discuss the difficulties and the problems, so I was glad to see these numbers.
I just want to make a quick comment. I want to thank, I'm not sure everybody up here realizes, but I want to thank all the faculty as well as staff that helped facilitate the FAFSA speediness of it, so to speak. There were a lot of volunteers from our faculty who helped along with this program, so again, just want to say, give a shout out to enrollment, because that was a great job. If only 12%, if that little across the state filled it out, that we got an increase tells you something, so.
Upcoming also, well, for the job, Scott. Last year, I didn't go in parking lot was full, but we're basically, and as to me, I don't cry, because last year this time, it was getting cold along the ramp, peeling lot, peeling lot, and I was like, this year, and I love that, so good job.
Yeah, I just took a walk yesterday to feel it, it was good.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else?
So I want to close my report with, to follow Bobby and Chairman Dupree, to say thank you to our college community, faculty and staff, and students who worked diligently to help push our wildly important goal this year, as we did last year. So join me in giving. So join me in giving our... And I will add that, based on the community college funding that we got from the state this year, we got, was it 76,000, Adam, to support healthcare-related programs. We put all of that into...
Yeah.
Into EMT paramedics.
Yep.
That's my report.
Any questions for President Jordan? Thank you. Other business, any items for future agendas? Let me also just give another big thanks to, because convocation, we did a dry run the day before, and I wasn't even aware that there was so much organizational strength behind operating that thing the whole day. So Susan was sort of at the helm of it, but everybody in Pelt was part of it, but also, you know, down to food services, you name it. Everybody participated beautifully. I thought it went off really well, so congratulations again on that, and thank you for all the work. Our next meeting will be September 24th, 2024, and with that, Megan, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.